Item 10H, receive your report and provide direction regarding alternatives for repair and replacement of private sewer laterals.
As discussed before, how critical is the proper maintenance of our system to really support long-term sustainability, proper management of the system, and also to minimize costs? Sewer is no different than any of our other system. And I know that I used this analogy before, and it's the easiest way for me to say that the sewer is a very simple system. You just have to keep the sewer in and the rainwater out, and that the system will work just right. Of course, to be able to do that is very important, the structural integrity of the system. And the system works as a whole, irregardless who owns it, who maintains it. As you are very well aware, that the city owns the mains, the sewer mains, and the property owners, each resident owns the lateral between the home and the main. Except, based on the policy decision by the consultant made back in eighty-six, if the resident will install a proper, up-to-the-standard cleanout, then the city will take over the responsibility of the maintenance and replacement of the lower lateral at that time. It's our interest to properly manage the system, irregardless of who maintains it or owns it for that reason, that the rainwater will get in the system even through the privately-owned portion of the system, and also the sewer will get out even if it's not maintained or owned by the city. Right now, about twenty-five percent of lower lateral is under city's responsibility to maintain it, based on the fact that about twenty-five percent of our residents installed the standard cleanout. Due to the age of the system, and now the sewer system reached that time when more and more problems are developed, including with the private lateral itself, is the need, and the need for the city to replace the lower lateral and then to take over the responsibility of maintaining it is escalating in the last few years. You had that information provided in the staff report, and you see the huge escalation of the investment what the city needs to provide for the replacement and the maintenance of that section of our system, which really is a huge draw on our resources, including human resources and financial resources. Reason why, back in two thousand and twelve, you asked us to come back with some possible alternative for you to consider, what would be the best way for our residents and also for the city to manage this issue in the long term. Jim Birch will take you to alternatives developed by us, as possible menu for you to consider.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, we took the report that was done in May two thousand and twelve, and we, because several cities were updating their policies regarding laterals, we called and asked them lots of questions about what they were doing, and we basically firmed up the report that the consultant did in May, and we added a little bit more information to it. And in particular, in your staff report, some of the costs associated with the lateral response that we provide now, and also projected out into the future, what we anticipate's going to happen. We've taken this information and the policy recommendation report to the subcommittee, which we've adjusted several times, and there is a matrix in the back for Councilmember O'Connell, and hopefully, we did at least, to give you some at a quick glance, a quick comparison for the alternatives that we've explored. And they are in line with the consultant's recommendations that were done in two thousand and twelve, with a couple of additions, and I will point those out. Basically, what we're recommending for the council, in terms of an adjustment to the policy, is to make the property owners responsible for the maintenance, repair, and replacement of the lower laterals, what we call the lower laterals, regardless if they have a cleanout installed or not. That's in line with the consultant recommendations, as I would mention, and also several other cities have made that adjustment as well. And in speaking with them, in the survey the consultant did, most of the adjustments were as a result of a consent decree or some outside influence as far as SSOs and also costs. We believe that this would allow us, we would recommend that we follow kind of the daily, what we call the Daily City model, which would be, we would still want to respond to our citizens and help them with any SSOs or any blockages or problems that they might have, but we would try to clear it and so forth, and then TV the lines if we could to determine if there's root problems or a separation of the pipe, and then we could provide that information to the homeowner as added information for them to make a decision. We would reduce an SSO, we'd respond and clean it up if we could, but provide the homeowner some guidance. In addition to that, we've researched, we've met with two different companies that provide a warranty program for homeowners, and for less than ten dollars, both companies have different levels of service, but in a nutshell, they would cover up to eight thousand dollars, one company covered for lateral replacements. So a homeowner would pay eight to ten dollars a month for warranty coverage on their sewer line, and when they have a claim, they contact, twenty-four hours a day, they contact this company, and they come out, assess the problem, and replace the line. And in this case, four thousand dollars from the house up to the property line, and then another four thousand would cover the street work, basically, sidewalk and street. And the other company, I think, had it limited at five thousand dollars for the whole entire work, no matter where it was, from the house to the main. So there's a little bit of difference in the programs and the presentations that we saw from the companies, but that's one thing that the council could consider, a warranty program, and partner with them. Daily City has partnered with the company. They review the materials that would be mailed out to homeowners and approve that, and so that it's a partnership with that company. That's something the council could look into. Another thing that we investigated was a grant program. San Mateo has a grant program. South San Francisco had a grant program, and both of those were a fifty percent match up to a certain defined amount. San Mateo's is up to, I believe it's five thousand dollars for a cost share, and the homeowner would be responsible for getting three quotes, and San Mateo would pay up to five thousand dollars of the lowest quote for the work to replace a lateral. So that's another thing that we looked into. We've looked into a couple of other alternatives. One is to just return the maintenance responsibility back to the homeowners and provide no service whatsoever. It's an alternative, it's not one that we're recommending. Another alternative would be to require the homeowner to replace the lateral if there was a problem, but the city could enroll, if you will, the lateral into an ongoing maintenance program, such as we have now. Once we have a lateral into the program, we set it up with a CMMS system on a six-month or twelve-month check, where the crews would go out and do some level of maintenance, and that's another possibility. Those are all sort of add-ons to what we thought was the main core, which was the lateral replacement itself. So tonight, we are asking not only the acceptance of the report, but seeking some guidance and some direction from council as to our next steps, and we're willing to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions of staff, ideas?
Yeah. Through the chair, I was just, in talking about the alternatives, in the situation where the city does not respond at all to a blockage, and the homeowner would then have to call a private plumber to come out and investigate and clear whatever blockage was there, versus having somebody from the city come out. And I know that, when we discussed this in subcommittee, I don't think we were leaning toward that option, but it's not a horrible option. I don't know that the homeowners would get necessarily any worse service by calling Roto Rootersave and calling the city. They would, I mean, it kind of, I don't know how many other cities do that portion of it, but, I mean, allowing us to focus on the mains and not worry about the laterals would certainly be a huge benefit to our operation, and the homeowners definitely have a lot of control in terms of how clean those systems stay. What they put down the drain is what's going to eventually cause a clog, and so they do have some level of control over how those laterals are maintained. So I just wanted to put that out there as we deliberate what options we want to take. It's definitely, I mean, the hundred and eighteen thousand is definitely a lot less than the million-dollar projected figure that we're looking at, but still an expenditure that, and again, something that's difficult for us to respond to.
Okay. Rico?
A few things. I think whatever path the council decides to go, it certainly needs public input. Certainly needs to, and I don't mean just to have a meeting here at six o'clock on a Tuesday night or a Wednesday night, but I mean true public education and really getting out there to all segments of the community. This is a big, different direction, and we can't assume the door hanger's going to work. I don't want to assume. So that's my first and most critical concern. When we talked about the two agencies that were interviewed as far as just as ideas, concepts for private insurance, where are they headquartered out of?
The warranty programs?
Yes.
I know one is on the East Coast. I don't know exactly where, and the other one is, I think, in the middle of the country. I couldn't tell you. We can provide that information. We do have, I have the printouts that I just didn't bring them tonight for those warranty programs.
So then the resident would go ahead and obviously be paying the insurance company, depending if they had interior, exterior coverage, and then the maximum amount, which may have a couple of levels, depending on how much they want to pay. So then the homeowner, if determined by a video, to go ahead and go forward, and the cost factor is brought to the insurance company, they then could come back and say, granted, we will do the maximum of three thousand, five thousand, and then there's going to be a copay to the resident for X number, and if the resident can't afford it, which is possible, then they're kind of stuck at that point. Correct?
I don't know about being stuck. I don't know about exactly what the warranty program would cover and under what scenarios. I know that when we met with them, they have a really high success rate. They are endorsed by the National League of Cities, and have a, and what they told us was that they pay up to, like I said, eight thousand dollars. I think we've estimated our costs, you know, it depends where, but anywhere between three and eight thousand dollars for a lateral repair. So we asked them that question, or what would happen if you get into a situation, and they said that the majority of the time, that they were, they're able to replace the entire lateral for that cost. Obviously, there's some...
And it depends what the person chose for their insurance. If the coverage is too low, like a car insurance, it's the same, you know, you're going to get to a certain limit.
So I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but neither of the companies, I don't have their materials here, but I'm just from memory, neither of the companies we spoke to had any deductibles for coverage. It was a monthly premium, and then they paid whatever the cost was.
They're warranty, they're... Through the chair. They're not really insurance companies, correct? They're warranties.
It's a warranty company, not an insurance company.
So, I know, they're a little different.
I'm just using insurance as a comparison, that everybody's got different levels of insurance, car insurance, home insurance.
But actually, these companies did not have such levels.
Yeah, but this is not, this is different.
It is different. I'm a little familiar with some of it, so this is why I'm asking the questions. So, also in the city cemetery, you brought up something, which I've brought up often, is the program they have, where they incentivize somebody to go out, and I've often brought that up. The last time I brought that up, Clara had said, "Well, but we want to be mindful." Rico, you've brought this up as far as the rates. So I would assume that that means that the money would have to come from somewhere, which means higher rates. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is a fair statement, and would be then part of the discussion and recommendation that whatever grand program the city would think about it, and also besides the grand program, which can be part of the toolkit what you are contemplating, also could be for low-income families, a separate program. Those should be less than how much was the average cost for the city, that you will have to contemplate, that whatever the cost for those grand program or low income, for low income has to come from a special revenue for the rate purposes. But at what level you are setting that grand program or providing to the resident would be lower than the existing cost to the rate payer right now.
Okay. And again, I think these are some avenues in which that do need to be explored. I know for the city of San Bruno, there are some that are already belonging to warranty, insurance-type structure, whatever the word you want to use, that has increased in the city of San Bruno. If we want to look to other cities, we can look to South City and San Mateo, some of our neighbors, who already have that well-established into their communities. And so there's people right next door to us that certainly can give guidance and some information that they have, that they've been using for quite some time. Doesn't have to be them, but on how they do it, and of course, it's through different agencies, not through the city so much, but they outsource that as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Oh, no. Michael and I have...
Okay, so...
We've spoken, so we need...
As a subcommittee, and you're way deep into this more than...
More ways than one.
Yeah. Your recommendation is alternate number three?
Well, my, it's a toss, it's, let's see. We were trying to find a kind of happy medium, so to speak. We didn't want to abandon people totally from what they're used to, as they've been, the city's been taking care of it since nineteen eighty-six. People are used to it, they expect it. This would be a drastic change for some people, but then I was listening to what Michael was saying, and I realized, one of my mother's rental properties, they had a backup, they didn't think about calling the city, they called us, and we called the plumber. So that was a five-hundred-dollar bill just to go in there and go, "Oh, yeah," and cleaned out the line. So maybe it's not that drastic of a change. Maybe the people who haven't been around all that long don't expect the city to do it. So I don't, you know, it's why we're here tonight. That's why we went through all this stuff. We did this for hours several times, and we don't have a definitive answer for you either, except that there's the cost. I had to make the matrix up so that we could see the cost, and the projected cost is amazing, and not in just dollars, but in the staff time and the time away from other projects that desperately need to be done. So there we are.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a member of the public, Mr. Rico?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. Two things you had commented before, and I guess led the citizens to believe that if they had the right cleanouts, that the city was going to take ownership up to a certain point. I think if you're going to change that, you need to be really strong in your justification, because in effect, if you give them something, and now you're saying, "Well, we're going to take it away," without proper justification. And I go along with Vice Mayor Medina's comment, that you really need to advise the people that have these, have a meeting or two where this really gets discussed, and not just in front of a handful of people, because I think when it goes into effect, you're going to get all sorts of complaints. Thank you.
Okay. I guess the issue is that, over the years, things get pretty old, and this city has, you know, early on in this whole situation, done some things that were pretty gratis for the citizens, and now to the point where it's costing way, way more than we should really be able to absorb. So you look at other cities, and a lot of them, you know, have the homeowner take responsibility for that, and I really think that's what we have to do going forward. There's some way to compromise or ease into it, that would be great, but I don't think the city should have to take on the responsibility of that whole line when in fact, other cities are having the homeowners take responsibility.
Through the chair, I would also comment along those lines that the homeowners that did take advantage of that program and had cleanouts installed, still have a huge advantage, even if the city's not assuming that, because that could make a five-hundred-dollar plumber call, a hundred-dollar plumber call, because that cleanout is in place, and it simplifies the process. Point well taken, though, I do see that there could be a lot of confusion and complaints from the public, so we'll approach that carefully.
Okay. Ken?
And I'd like to add, community development is still aggressive in making sure that homeowners install cleanouts for, I believe, most permit applications, and it might be permit applications that include just plumbing, but I think that is, you know, that is a program that, you know, along with, you know, educating the homeowners on, you know, that there's going to be a change. I mean, this, the whole discussion, I mean, I kept thinking about the sidewalks, and how everyone, you know, just accepted the fact that the city took care of sidewalks, because it was in the right of way, and that my responsibility went to here, and that the city needed to take care of all the sidewalks, the lifts, and all the cracks. And that's been a very challenging transition to get the homeowners to understand that it is their responsibility now. So I agree with the Vice Mayor. I mean, we do need to get into a little more of a simple education process to let everyone know, what does this mean? And I'd like to feel more comfortable knowing, just like what Irene says, is, you know, how often does this happen, and, you know, how many, I guess, problems you arise between cities and homeowners if, you know, if some of these cities are taking or giving up responsibility and passing them on to the property owners, you know, are there disputes? Are there, you know, major uproars now? So...
And finally, the only thing I know, looking at the chart, is in two thousand and eleven, we were at one point, we over, it looks like more than doubled between eleven and twelve. So this is something that should be on our radar, should have been, and I know they were waiting for another year of information, I don't know. So with that said, I believe this is something that is, I know nobody likes moving slow, but at the same time, I really think the public needs to be brought into fold, and really needs to be brought to the table along with the rest of us. We can say what we know from our big picture up here and going over the budget and the costs, but I think it's important to bring the residents, and so that they feel as best we can to explain the situation that we have. Other communities are going to this, there is no doubt about it, but it is a big change. I think it needs to be at the same point in which you're offering other opportunities for them to have these insurances. People here in this town aren't familiar with that. We had something that went around, and so sure you had some people take advantage of it, but if they understand the true value, just like having car insurance, sometimes you don't like paying it, but I'll tell you, when you need it, it pays off. And I think until you can couple that all together to this public, I think we need not to jump into this, until we bring everybody at the table together.
Irene, go ahead.
So we've muddied the waters again, basically, but I think what I hear everyone saying is that we need to move, we need to move, but move slowly in the direction of having the homeowner take more responsibility. How much that is exactly, I don't think anyone's really comfortable saying right this second. I think having the warranty programs available and educating people about those is very, very important. I think we need to explore further the grant programs. I know San Mateo has a set number of money they put aside, but once it's gone, it's gone. They don't have any kind of criteria for it, like if you're low-income or not. So that, I would not particularly go that direction either, but then I know there's legal ramifications if you go the other direction. So we agree with you that we shouldn't be taking the responsibility that we have been, that we do need to change the program. It sounds like we're all trying to kind of find the right formula for San Bruno. So if we set up some public outreach study-type programs with information about the warranties, maybe with a representative from the warranty program that Daily City uses, because they are the ones, are they the ones with the eight-thousand-dollar?
Correct.
Okay, and they've been very successful with it and all that. So maybe that would be a start, and kind of, your chart that shows the million dollars for this stuff is very telling. So I think that's what I hear us saying.
So what you're suggesting is maybe holding a community, one of the questions we had was, we've got two companies, and I don't know that we have a choice between the two, but it sounds like what we need to do is explore that a little bit further and possibly hold a community meeting with a warranty company, so that people can understand the program and ask questions.
Yes, and I would, I think what we need to do is explain to people why we're doing this, why we're contemplating a change that would, to some people, would be very drastic. So, I mean, the cost that the city's assuming for these things is amazing.
What Jim really means by the fact that the city has a choice is that, like Daily City entered in a marketing agreement with one of the company, but does not, cannot prevent from the other company to really...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Ask the residents to basically enter in agreement with them.
No, no, I want us to endorse.
It's not an exclusive agreement.
Right, right, right. So when you say invite one or two, I don't think that, I would want the city to be perceived as, here's who we endorse, and here's who you should sign up with, and we've brought them to a meeting for you.
Well...
There's not the concern.
Pardon me?
The marketing agreement.
Well, that is what Daily City, I'm not saying we should do that or not do that, I'm just saying that is what Daily City has done. They chose one. But the point is, we need somebody there who knows about warranties and can explain it to people. There you go.
What they've told us is that when they enter into a partnership with a city, that they achieve a higher level of participation rate than they would otherwise. That some companies do the direct marketing thing, and it's, I think the participation rate was three percent, I mean, it was very, very low. But when they partner with a city, they can get up to, they have told us about twenty-five to thirty percent is about the most that they could expect. So that's kind of what we're looking for, a little bit of direction if we can enter into an agreement with a company, start reviewing some of the materials, talk about the public outreach and what that might look like, and then perhaps hold a town hall meeting type thing, is what it sounds like might be able to move us forward. At least, I think that's what I'm hearing.
I believe so, and I think in principle, the council wants the homeowner to take, maybe all is a stretch, but a lot more responsibility for that line. On the other side, give them some other options to be covered if in fact they do have a problem.
Sure. And in terms of outreach, I just wanted to address that, because we've got a program that's specific to the Sharp Park neighborhood, and we had... to the Sharp Park neighborhood, and we had door hangers, but we sort of upped the ante, so to speak, where we sent staff out this past Saturday, door-to-door, to about three hundred homes, and made, tried to make personal contact to get people to be aware of the program. And tomorrow night at six-thirty at the Bay Vista condominium rental leasing office, we're going to have a meeting. So we've targeted that, I'm not suggesting that we could do that citywide, but we are, we are trying, everything that we can to, in this case, address the lower, the laterals in the Sharp Park neighborhood. And so it's our, it's our wish to do that, in this case, too, to educate people, whatever the policy may end up to be.
Okay. Do you have a feeling for what you believe the council needs to, wants to have accomplished?
I believe that step has a general direction